Thank you.
Yep, Chairman LaRue.
Here.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Here.
Member Clerk Espaio.
Here.
Member Cavino.
Present.
Member Raymond.
Present.
Member Gaffney.
Here.
Member Rappaport.
Present.
Okay, welcome everyone. This meeting is being recorded. The Town of Burlington will be holding the April 16th, 2020 Planning Board as a virtual electronic meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus. As such, the Governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under general law. Thirty A, Section 20.
So this meeting is held via Cisco Webex and is accessible as follows. The, a link is available on our website and posted on the agenda in the town calendar. Also, the Cisco Webex, the meeting number access code is 712-863-236. The meeting can also be accessed by dialing 1-408-418-9388 with the same access code 712-863-236. The meeting is also being broadcast on BCAT Government Channel Comcast 99, RCN 15, and Verizon 41, and streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Facebook webpage. Public input, the public will be able to make comments during the hearing during the time for public comments asked for by the Chair. Questions can be asked via WebEx chat, via phone, Facebook Live, and email, and also Facebook, I mean, WebEx in person if you're called in. And if you have any questions, you can email planning@berlinet.org during the meeting. All persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves prior to asking the question. If you have any other questions regarding participation during the meeting, you can call planning staff at 781-270-1645, or email us at planning@berlinet.org. And we hope we have covered every way that people can participate. We're doing our best to try to make it as broad as possible, so thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Okay, so, Mike, I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I want to make a motion to take Item 6A out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Thank you, this is Barbara. All those, um...
Roll call vote.
We're going to do roll call, yes.
We will spend more time doing roll call than probably anything else tonight. Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Espaio.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, this is Barbara. Item 6A, which we are taking out of order for discussion purposes, is continued discussion application for approval of a minor engineering change, 3 and 5 Dartmouth Road, General Walker Estates subdivision. General Walker Estates is the applicant.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I want to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of May 7th, 2020.
Second.
Roll call vote, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Espaio.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to take Items 7A, 7B, and 7C together and out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Roll call vote, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Espaio.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, this is Barbara. Item 7A is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.2.22, drive-through of the zoning bylaws, 150 Lexington Street, Arista Development LLC Incorporated is the applicant. Item 7B is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.4.1.11, discharges from man-made structures into the wetlands of the zoning bylaws, 150 Lexington Street, Arista Development LLC Incorporated is the applicant. Item 7C is a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 6.1.2.1, non-conforming structures and premises of the zoning bylaw, 150 Lexington Street, Arista Development LLC Incorporated is the applicant. And Item 7D is a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, 150 Lexington Street, Arista Development LLC is the applicant.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters to the Planning Board meeting of May 7th, 2020, at the request of the applicant's attorney in an email dated April 15th, 2020.
Second.
So, just to clarify, because it is evident on our website that this is a proposal for a Citizens Bank within the Coles parking lot, and we do expect it to be heard at the next meeting. Roll call vote, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Espaio.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
That'll do it.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to take Items 7E, 7F, 7G, 7H, 7I, 7J, 7K, and 7L together and out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Roll call vote, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Espaio.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Ga, uh, Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, this is Barbara. Item 7E is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article 1.10, Administration and Procedures as a Perseance to Permitting Procedures Submitted by the Planning Board. All of the following are submitted by the Planning Board. Item 7F is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the Planning Board procedural rules and regulations as they pertain to permitting struc, permitting procedures, excuse me. Item 7G is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Burlington as they pertain to permitting procedures. Item 7H is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the Planning Board special permit rules and regulations as they pertain to permitting procedures. Item 7I is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the Planning Board site plan rules and regulations as they pertain to permitting procedures. Item 7J is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the land development rules and regulations as they pertain to permitting procedures. Item 7K is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the Planning Board town center design rules and regulations as they pertain to permitting procedures. And Item 7L is a continued public hearing, petition to amend the small wireless facility design rules and regulations as they pertain to permitting procedures, all submitted by the Planning Board.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters to the Planning Board meeting of May 7th, 2020.
Second.
So just to remind the board, these are a long list, and the list is longer than probably the amendment to all of them, is, this is to allow for electronic permitting for all of these things. There's a lot of the regulations that have recently passed during the emergency that have kind of allowed us to continue without it being as pressing for these, but we do expect to bring these forward to you. But, you know, as we're trying to figure out remote meetings, wanted to push it off at least a, a meeting, so. Roll call vote, Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Espaio.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to take Items 7Q and 7R together and out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Espaio.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Right. Item 7Q is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.2.6, outdoor storage of supplies and equipment incidental to permitted uses, subject to requirements for location, lighting, screening, fencing, cover, and safety precautions of the zoning bylaws, 376 Cambridge Street, The Granite Place Incorporated is the applicant. And Item 7R is a continued discussion, application for approval of a minor engineering change, 376 Cambridge Street, The Granite Place Incorporated is the applicant.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters to the Planning Board meeting of May 2020, as requested in an email by the applicant's engineer on April 10th, 2020.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Espaio.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, this is Barbara again, and next we have citizens' time. If there is anyone that would like to make, ask a question or make a statement that is about something that is not on our agenda, please identify yourself now. Staff, do we see anyone?
We do not have anyone in the chat or on Facebook Live currently.
I don't have anybody who's raised their hand, so I think we're good.
And no emails or phone calls.
All right, great. All right, then, we're going to move on to announcements.
So announcements, just to remind everyone, planning staff is working remotely. As always, we'll be available via email at planning. Best way to reach us, planning@berlinet.org goes to all four members of our staff. All our individual email addresses are also still intact. Our phones have all been forwarded to our cellphones, including the main line, so you can reach us at any time. We are periodically trying to get into the office just to make sure we're, you know, dealing with any mail that may have come in, but the, really, I would urge everyone to be trying to find us through those avenues of email and phone to get a timely response. Also, the townwide election has been voted to move to June 6th, 2020. The Town Clerk's Office has a lot of information on their website if you're looking for more information. The selectmen have also voted to reschedule town meeting officially to June 10th, 2020, and there is also additional information on the Town Clerk's website. Oh, and then also town offices will be closed and remotely closed on April 20th, in observation of Patriots' Day.
Thank you. This is Barbara again. We do not have any legal notices on approvals or administrative matters, so we'll be moving on to matters of appointment now. Our first matter of appointment is Item 7D, a public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article 2, definitions, and Article 4, use regulations, to address and define uses pertaining to short-term rentals submitted by the Planning Board.
So I'll start with this, Liz. If we can get up on the screen the redlined version of S-12 zoning bylaw submittal, that's the general bylaw. Okay, so this, this is the clean version of what was discussed at zoning bylaw review. I know, Ernie, you have attended zoning bylaw review, and I know Bill and Mike, you were instrumental in kind of getting this moving and, and starting this process. So I'm just going to give you an update on where the conversation has gone so, thus far. We don't recommend taking a vote tonight. We want to give, because we really haven't talked about it too much, want to give people time to kind of digest what the proposal is. The proposal is to add a new definition for short-term rentals, as well as prohibit short-term rentals, add a section in the use table, and at this point prohibit, pretty much prohibit across the board, the short-term rentals. A short-term rental has been defined as, and this has been modified by the ZBRC, the use of a res, in Article 2, the use of a residential unit for occupancy by a person or persons for a period of fewer than 28 consecutive calendar days for a fee. A short-term rental may or may not be facilitated through a booking agent. A short-term rental is an occupied property that is not a hotel, motel, lodging house, inn, or bed and breakfast establishment where at least one room or unit is rented. A short-term rental includes an apartment, house, cottage, condominium, or other accommodation. And then there is an amendment in the use table to add a new section 42133 in the principal use regulations, and through R O R G R C, B N B L B G, B T I G I H I R, and O S have a prohibition, as well as the town center, civic center, and CBD. There's also a section in the accessory use regulation schedule, 43112 for short-term rental, which mirrors the prohibition across the board in that section as well. Any questions, or, Ernie, or Bill, or Mike, if you have any comments in the, the development of our comments from ZBRC, I welcome you to offer them.
I, this is Ernie. From my attendance at the ZBRC meetings, it was discussed at quite a lot of length. Initially, it sounded like, way back a bunch of months ago, as that it might be a good idea to allow it, but put in some strong regulations, and then it got kind of turned around to the majority of the ZBRC anyways, thinking that it should be prohibited completely. A lot of discussion was based around the number of days, the 28 days that are in there now, was a resolution of the majority of the board. Other than that, is this, this is in the zoning bylaw too, I, I think, and I think Sheri's in there also, she may have some thoughts on it, but I think we also thought that it should at least be in the general bylaw also, so there would be some better enforcement.
So to that end, I'll, I'll bring it up. It's not under the Planning Board to review, but in discussion, it did come up that should this be in zoning and general, so the, both, the, not just the building department, but the police department can also help enforce short-term rentals. And the zoning bylaw review has created a general bylaw article for which they're going through that process with the general, general bylaw review committee. For a short-term rental in Article 14 with a similar definition, but to really add it in the public safety section, under short-term rental prohibited. So that, that's just as, as an aside, it's going down both pathways at the same time.
Okay.
So, Mike or Bill, any comments on just kind of the origin of how we started talking about this?
I think there's, the way we started talking about it was we wanted to kind of find a way to preserve the sanctity of our neighborhoods, and I think it's well-written, and I think this, this does that by along for term rentals in town.
Yeah, thank you, Bill here, Madam Chair. Yeah, I just think, based on the current circumstances, in the information I've read, since we've talked about it, I think it even, you know, verifies the position that the board in the town is taking on this, with regard to the folks that, you know, the background on staying in short-term rentals, it probably is in foresight, probably the right thing to do.
So our recommendation is to not take a vote on this tonight, just, one, because it's really the first time we're talking substantively about it, but I also want to watch this a little bit more as we go through the, with the general bylaw and zoning, to see if there's any thing that is modified on either end, just for consistency, so. Anyway, just definitely want to keep it open at this meeting, and we'll, you know, cross the bridge next, next meeting to see where they're at.
This is Barbara. Is there anyone in the listening audience or online who wants to weigh in on this?
This is Sheri. Am I unmuted? Hi, I just wanted to give a little synopsis from the zoning bylaw review committee, if that's a good place to do this. One of the discussions that we had is that, although it's not a unanimous vote that this should be prohibited, the folks that do believe that this really needs to be, have a really good backup material for folks, and the justification for why we want this prohibited, so I don't know if we can enlist your, your assistance on that as well, too, as far as the safety, and also the cost to the town of what it would cost to actually enforce this, and just the reasons for the safety behind all of that. And Andy, Congress and the building inspector certainly helped us out on that, telling us all the issues with the safety and things. So I think we firmly believe that there needs to be a really good backup for town meeting, for these, both the general and the zoning bylaw. In addition to that, the general bylaw review committee is having a meeting next Tuesday night, so this will be on their agenda, just to let you know. That's it.
Thank you, Sheri. Staff, is that something that we can help zoning bylaw review with, come up with the backup material for town meeting?
Yeah, no, most definitely. And Sheri, can you share with us the general by, or I guess it's in the, it'll be in their agenda for the WebEx information or Zoom for the meeting next Tuesday?
Correct. I'm not sure if it's on the town calendar yet. I know Scott Martin just sent me an email with that information, but I'm going to assume it's going to be on the town calendar as well, too, but I can certainly pull it.
Yep. Yeah, no, of course, we'll definitely help with any, any kind of backup that we want to put together.
I think it's a cooperative effort, as far as, you know, just all that information gathered together.
Yep, sure.
This is Barbara again. Thank you, Sheri. Is there anyone else that wants to weigh in on this? Okay, I'm going to assume no one. Let's move on. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of May 7th, 2020.
Second.
Roll call.
Did we lose? Hello?
I'll do it. I'm, I was muted. Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Espaio.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to take Items 7M, 7N, 7O, 7P together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Roll call vote, keeping us on our toes. Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impemba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Espaio.
Yes.
Member Cavino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, this is Barbara. Item 7M is a public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article 2, definitions, and Article 4, use regulations, to address and define uses pertaining to parking structures submitted by Esca Drill Realty LLC. And 7N is a public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article 5, dimensional regulation schedule as it pertains to parking structures submitted by Esca Drill Realty LLC. Item 7O is a public hearing, petition to amend the zoning bylaw Article 7, parking structures, to modify the requirements for parking garages submitted by Esca Drill Realty LLC. And Item 7P is a public hearing, petition to rezone property to the General Business BG District, 1 to 3 Ray Avenue. Ray Avenue Trust is the applicant. So now I would welcome Tom Murphy and Mike Murray and other members of the Esca Drill Parking Deck and Subcommittee to present.
Tom, are you there? Do you want to start?
Tom, you're on mute.
You're still muted.
And just let us know which, to make sure we have the right visual up, just let us, guide us when you're talking.
Okay. There you go. Madam Chair, just briefly, the, we were last before the board on March 5th. Since then, we've been before the ZBRC and the Land Use Committee. They've both voted on our presentations favorably, for the most part, there were a couple of items that were, were postponed by the respective boards for various reasons. But just for the sake of people who might be listening, this regards the Cafe Esca Drill site down on Cambridge Street. The proposal involves constructing a parking deck on a vacant lot behind the Esca Drill that's sited on Ray Avenue to increase the parking capacity at the, at the Esca Drill site. And the various articles before, that will be before town meeting, seek to accomplish that by changing the bylaws in appropriate places, and the last one deals with the change of zoning classification for the lot from an IG to a BG district. We've had numerous meetings, both with this board, some of the other committees in town, subcommittees, over the course of the last several months, and we've kind of whittled down to what's before the board is kind of what's the result of all of those discussions have been. I'm going to turn it over to Mike. He knows, he has the details certainly better than I. He also put together a package that identifies the potential other parcels in town that could be eligible to, to construct a, a parking structure in a BG district, and we've tried to identify those for the board's information as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Mike, if I could, Madam Chair, and then we can, then obviously answer any questions the board might have.
Thank you, Tom. Yes, please go ahead, Mike.
Okay, this is Mike Murray. So some of the information on the various articles haven't changed since the last time we met, so I guess if I could just go through them one by one and say, you know, if it hasn't changed or what we have changed. So the first one, all right, well, that's, that's section four, so that's the use table, so that hasn't changed from the last time we've discussed it, so what we're trying to do there is just, there will be new definitions for parking structures, and this new use table will incorporate those definitions into the use table. And the only modified use that would be allowed, from what is currently allowed, is the allowance of a parking deck in the BG via special permit. And then the next section, I'm not sure what order you have it in, Liz.
I'm trying to find the number of the, of the, of the names of the documents.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I, I.
Okay.
So this is section five. This hasn't changed since the last time we discussed this with the board, but it, it was discussed at, at the zoning bylaw review committee again, and as I had mentioned previously to the board, there's the question of whether, at this point, this is a necessary bylaw, warrant article to have, as originally part of this was to try to restrict the number of lots in town that could do that, and we have now moved forward with other restrictions that have narrowed it down, and so this is almost a non-factor. I don't see how this would necessarily come into play at this point, but it was something that I think the board wanted to discuss further.
Mike, I would agree, this is Kristin Kazner. I would agree with you, but I think it would definitely be helpful to kind of pause, table it, go through Article 7, and then circle back to this.
Okay.
I just think it'll be more clear.
Sure. So the next article is the section seven, which, this is the section in the bylaw that currently talks about parking garages, so we're amending that to have further restrictions on parking structures that would be allowed in the BG, and to narrow down the amount of lots in town that this would be allowed. And the first one is a restriction for a buffer of 200 feet to the lot line, so any lot that's within 200 feet of a residential district would not be allowed to have a parking structure, and then the lot area must be a minimum of 150,000 square feet, so that narrows it down some more. And then the third requirement is the parking structure must be an accessory used to a restaurant with a function facility, having a mini, minimum occupancy of 400. So that, we also define function facility, which I'll go over on, when we get to that warrant article. So that narrows it down to even more. So we're down to, I think it's seven lots, or there's a five lots, and then a couple of lots that could be combined, that this could happen on, but then none of them have the function facilities, so that if they wanted to take advantage of this bylaw, they would have to create a restaurant with a function facility. And then also, as a part of this warrant to create a restaurant with a function facility. And then also, as a part of this warrant article, there's the green space requirement, which states that if there is a parking structure, then the equivalent amount of square footage, green space, would need to be on the site. And the only difference with that, from what we had discussed before, was that we added the word upland to just say that, you know, a wetland area, which you wouldn't be able to build on anyways, wouldn't be counted towards that calculation. And then the next article. So this is just, this is the rezoning of, oops, this is just the rezoning of 13 Ray Ave to BG to make the entire property, the Esca Drill and, and 13 Ray Ave BG, as opposed to being an IG. And the next article. So this is the definition of function facility, which we amended just very little with the ZBRC. So it's just function facility and establishment which is rented for the purpose of hosting private events, private parties, conferences, banquets, weddings, or other social events. We had had some language in there about that it needed to be associated with a hotel or restaurant, but it was decided that that, that could be eliminated because those were further restrictions that could be applied further in various places in the bylaw if necessary and didn't necessarily need to be in the definition of function facility. And I think that's it. Oh, and these are the, these are the definitions that are technically submitted through the ZBRC for the parking structures, but have also added parking lot and green space. These, I don't believe have changed since the last time that we had discussed this. And then I think it's just, I had some, some maps that just showed the various parcels that this could have, this could be on. So this is the Esca Drill, 26 Cambridge Street and 13 Ray Ave, obviously what we're talking about. The next one is Wayside Commons. So they meet the buffer requirement, they meet the lot area, but as of right now, they wouldn't meet the use requirement. And the next one. So this is, this is on Wall Street. So where what was formerly Paparazzi is now Tezmacal and Jack's Firestone Pizza, I think it's called. So none of these three lots individually would meet the lot area, but if they were combined in some way, they would meet the buffer requirement in the lot area. So it's possible that it could be added on to here. But again, they would need to meet the use restriction that we have put into the amendment. So then the next one is the mall, which again, obviously can meet the lot area requirement. Currently doesn't have a function facility. So they would have to add that to be able to take advantage of that. And then this, this parcel is the Barnes and Noble and Yard House site. Again, they meet, they meet the buffer and lot area requirements, but not the use requirement. And 5153 Middlesex, Middlesex Turnpike. So this is Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and Trader Joe's. Same issue, same as the other ones that meets the square footage in the buffer, but not the use. I think it was mentioned before, too, that there might be some other restrictions there due to power lines or some other kind of easements, but I'm, I'm not, I don't know the specifics of that. And then I believe the last one, so this is 54 and 56 Middlesex Turnpike, is like a, there's a FedEx office and one of the tenants is the Real School of Music, just for reference. And again, neither of these two lots would would meet the lot area requirement on their own. But if they were combined in some way, then, then they could meet the lot area. I'm not sure which number it is. One of the larger lot there is partially into a different zone. So I'm not exactly sure how that for the lot area would come into play. But I just, just going to assume that they, if it was combined, it would meet the lot area. And I think that's all of them. So I guess I could open it up to questions or explanations.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. I'm going to just call on different members to speak. I'm going to go in the roll call order just for.
Madam Chair, can I summarize quickly first?
Of course.
Just to kind of get, get us back. Liz, can you put up the definitions that have been offered by ZBRC? Right there. So we talked about definitions early on. ZBRC took on this to, to look at these definitions. We do not have a definition for structured parking in the bylaw right now. They wanted to take a look at that, and I think they've done a great job putting this list together. So between green space parking lot, those are just new definitions. Don't have to do, don't necessarily have to do specifically with this, I mean, this proposal. Parking structures, detached parking, integrated parking are new definitions for the bylaw. Parking deck is kind of what was, what we're talking about within this proposal. And there, there's a definition there for an elevated parking structure composed of one level. Parking deck may be partially or totally above grade, with those levels being open and closed or integrated into the grade of a site. So with the proposal that we're talking about at, in BG at, behind the Esca Drill site, it's, we're talking parking deck. So Liz, can you go to the function facility definition? So, and the question is parking, will, do we want to consider a parking deck in the BG district in association with a function facility? And a function facility defined purely as an establishment which is rented for the purpose of hosting private parties, conferences, banquets, weddings, or other social events. And as Mike Murray was talking about was that, you know, we had some prohibitions in here, but as I think correctly pointed out by ZBRC, we shouldn't be putting restrictions into a definition. We should be putting restrictions into the appropriate place within parking restrictions in the zoning bylaw, which is Article 7. So in Article 7, if we can go there. Sorry to bounce around a little bit. Article 7, so we're saying, do we want to allow for a parking deck associated with a function facility? And we talked a lot about, to make sure it was a principal use function facility, not just, not just like, I have a restaurant, I'm renting out the restaurant, and there's, you know, 400 people. And, you know, it needs to be a function facility separate and apart as an accessory from that restaurant, not just the restaurant itself being used as a function facility to then be allowed to build this parking deck. So you have the parking deck, which is that one-story structure. If, if we were going to move this forward, so in the BG district, that deck can be allowed under the conditions that it needs to be within 200 feet of residential. The lot area must be a minimum of 150,000 square feet. And the parking structure must be accessory to a restaurant with a function facility having a minimum occupancy of 400, which there is no other in town right now except for the Esca Drill. Because we're not talking about a hotel with a function, but we're talking about a restaurant defined as a restaurant in the zoning bylaw with a function facility. And then further with the green space requirement, that they need to have an equivalent square footage of upland green space equal to 100% of the building area. And then we did want to add, though, through the, that we did similarly with Biotech recently, that, you know, if there really was another public purpose, like, you know, if there was a whole bunch of roadway improvements or greenway improvements along the road, and it wasn't exactly on the property, but, you know, associated with the property, that the planning board would have that flexibility. But the indication is you need to do 100%, but there, if there is really something else that should be considered, that you have the flexibility to make that finding. And then the last piece of the rezoning, so therefore it's, do you want to rezone 13 Ray Ave to allow for this, to allow for, for the deck park, parking behind the function facility and restaurant, as that is the Esca Drill? The piece, so that, and then from there, if I can go back to Article 5. So Article 5 talks, this was when we were looking at narrowing sites and, you know, what sites, is this available in BG? And then this originally kind of came up, well, that was proposed to have that, you can bring it up, I think it goes from 0.33 to 0.25 building-to-ground footprint. What we talked a lot about, so it's the maximum aggregate building-to-ground area percentage shall be reduced to 25% when a parking structure is incorporated to the site. What we talked a lot about at ZBRC, and I concur with them, is, you know, where is this, what, is this just a measure to narrow down the sites? And is it clear? And there's a lot of things in the zoning bylaw that have this type of language that was created at a time where once, when you actually go back and look at the archives and eventually figure out what it means, you figure out that it was a way to do something else. And so therefore, we talked a lot about Article 7 directly being, if you have a parking deck and a restaurant facility, how many sites are possible? You're talking directly to the subject matter. Whereas here, it's, where did this come from? Someone reads it in 10 years, what does that mean? I could give you a whole bunch of examples of other language of the bylaw that is kind of vague, and you kind of have to figure out, where did this come from? So Article 5, I think in some ways, may minimize the amount of sites that this might be available to, but I would urge us to talk further about ways to do it more directly, if that is a concern, than try to kind of put this kind of vague, unclear kind of language in Article 5. So, you know, I, I hear the purpose of why we thought about it, but, you know, I'd rather have something more directly in Article 7 as to a prohibition directly to what the issue is. So, and zoning bylaw review committee seemed to concur with some of that rationale, as their, their whole mission is really looking to clarify the language within the bylaw. So, and I, you know, I don't want to speak for anyone at ZBRC or for Sheri or Mike, if you have more to say about it, but I, I would concur that it, we should, I would recommend that we also vote to not move forward on this, on Article 5. If there's issues surrounding the number of sites, I think we need to just talk in different, different avenues to get there.
Okay, this is Barbara. Thank you, Kristin.
Thanks.
So let's turn it over to the board. Vice Chairman Impemba, do you have any questions or comments you'd like to make?
Right now, I just want a more of a clarification on the green space piece of it. You know, exactly what, what amount we're talking at the deck? So are we talking about, you know, replicating the green space for both levels, obviously, right? So it's not just the footprint, it's, it's the total space, correct?
This is Mike Murray. No, the intent would be for the footprint. I mean, as it is now, there's a parking deck there now. And, and that, sorry, not a parking, a parking lot there now. And it would be the, the second level, the footprint of that, that would, that would be changing anything that's there now. So we had put it in there as the footprint, not, not the square footage of.
Right. And now that, in this case, that's the case. But, you know, that's not necessarily going to be the case somewhere else, right? We're not just, if there were another instance where this happened, it literally could be a parking deck that's, that's created, you know, where there is nothing, right? I mean, we could, you're not just adding one more level. Some, in some cases, you're actually creating a parking deck. So, you know, we, you know, I, my understanding was there would be more green space than just the additional level of area, because it's really not an incentive. You know, to me, that's the big, that's one of the big, you know, obviously, aside from the fact that it creates, you know, a usable scenario for the business, you know, the, the biggest draw to it for me is the creation of green space. And I think that kind of gives it, you know, gives a lot more incentive to, to be able to do it. You know, for, for the town side, you know, to change in the laws and, you know, creating a law that allows them, allows these facilities, these banquet facilities to be able to do this. I don't know. I guess that's up for, that's a discussion point that I would like to, you know, at least hear opinions on.
This is Barbara. Thank you. We can ask the different, the question is, they each have their chance to speak. Did you have anything else you wanted to add before I move on?
No, that's my, that's kind of my big, that's kind of, that would be my major issue with it, you know, or my major concern, or whatever, however you want to phrase that. You know, I want, I want there to be an incentive for the town side to be able to, you know, allow this to happen. That would be my thing with it. You know, I mean, I, I think Kristin's concern was already, obviously was, you know, well taken as well. I mean, I, you know, I think that Article 5, we need to figure out if that's something that we want to have, you know, and, and adopt or not adopt in there, you know, and how we want to address that piece of it.
Okay, this is Barbara again. Thank you, Joe. And for the other members, as I call on you to make your comments or ask your questions, please also respond to member Impemba's question about, as we say, it's a square footage versus footprint question. Okay?
Madam Chair, this is Tom Murphy. Could I just ask one quick question, a clarification on Joe's point?
Yes.
Is he, I just want to make sure I understand what he's advocating for. He's, is he, is, is what he's suggesting is that if somebody, if a parking deck was going to be put up, whatever the square footage of that parking deck was going to be, he's looking for that amount of green space to be replicated elsewhere, or to just be on the property elsewhere? I, I guess I'm just not quite sure.
I, I would say to be created, you know, whether it's replicated elsewhere or whether it's on the site. I would be looking to have it created, you know, the total amount of green space to be created. And that would be the incentive, that's kind of the incentive is, you know, to allow you to go up. I think it's, you know, the trade-off is that, you know, we're going to, we're going to be, we're going to allow you to go up to create more green space. So that in the case, I wouldn't really be creating much more green space if.
But I guess the, the only way you could create green space is by taking down either part of a structure or part of existing paved area? There's no other way that you can't create green space other than, there's green space there clearly. And I think, I think the intent of the way that this was written is, is that there'll be sufficient green space on the site when we're all said and done, so that it will be at least equal to what the, what the additional parking garage, parking structure, square footage.
So you wouldn't be creating, so sorry, you wouldn't, you're saying there'd be, there is green space that would be the equivalent of one deck there, even if it exists already? So there'd be no creation according to?
Correct. No, you know, yes, but I guess my, 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 what I don't understand is, obviously, the reason that somebody would do this is they need more parking, clearly. And they, and then if they do that, and they're required to take a, a, a similar amount of parking structure up to create that green space, then you're, you're really not going to get more parking. And you, you're not going to take down a part of the structure. So the only, the, the lot is made up of current green space, paved parking area in a building. So in order to put up one of these parking decks to get more parking, and you're doing that because you need more parking. that because you need more parking, you'd be requiring the applicant to then to take the same amount of parking area out of their parking lot and turn that into green space. So at the end of the day, they're at the same places they were with the parking. It doesn't make, it, it, it wouldn't certainly make a lot of sense for anybody to want to do that.
Well, yeah, I mean, and that, and I guess we're not going to really, it's not going to be something we're going to encourage, right? I mean, it's not really something.
No, I understand.
You know, it's not, like, I guess we're not, this isn't being set up to encourage people to do it.
Right.
It's, to me, it would be set up more to encourage people to find a way to create green space.
Right. Similarly, a, a property owner is not going to incur the expense, because these are expensive structures to, to build. If they're not going to get more parking out of it, then why, why even bother?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess.
Hey Joe, this is Bill. May I just think, as I think about something?
Please.
So, you know how we, we got into the land swap, right? Is there an opportunity here where, you know, we're not, we're talking by law in general, but we all know this is spot zoning, is there an opportunity to say there would be an equivalent amount of green space added, but it doesn't necessarily have to be on that site, but it has to be by the same, you know, or equivalent, it could be anywhere in town, but it has to be, you know, you know, doesn't have to be by the same owner, but they could buy that, or something, you know, somebody could purchase a lot and put up a park, for example, somewhere.
Right, I mean, that, that would be the, I mean, that would be the purpose, as far as I'm concerned, and that would be the same whether it was you guys or whether it was somebody else that happened to meet all the other criteria. And they said, hey, we're going to, you know, we, we really need this for our business, so we're going to, you know, to, it's going to create a lot of value to that business, so we're going to, we're going to replicate this somewhere. I mean, if, whether they turn around and they buy a piece of wetlands for the, for the conservation commission, or whether they, you know, create a, you know, buy another lot somewhere, or buy some, you know, in other words, I, I, I want, you know, I want there to, I, I, I don't think it's going to hap, it's not going to be a lot of cases where this is going to happen, as far as I could see. But I, I think that the ones, the times where it happens, I think it's, you know, it needs to be kind of justified for the town that, hey, we're, you know, we're, we're allowing something that we're normally not going to allow, we're actually going to change the laws to do it, but the incentive for the town is, we're going to get some, we're going to get the creation of some sort of green space.
So, so you, this is Bill, so you hear like other, other towns where somebody donates some land for a park because they're building an office space somewhere, and then, you know, like maybe the OTRW was an example of that, you know, I don't know how that came about years ago, but, you know, they, they're, they're putting in something that, like you said, you know, that they certainly want, and for the incentive for the town, you're going to put in, you know, a new tennis court or a walking path, you're going to get land somewhere to reciprocate for that.
I mean, under, under the, I guess what I'm saying is, it, we could, the same argument could be made in the reverse, right? If, so what is it actually doing for us to change the law to allow that? If you already have the green space there, it's not changing anything other than giving you an additional parking structure, you know? In other words, we're, you know, from the town side, we're, we're saying, hey, we're, you know, we're, we're willing to do this to allow businesses to, because it certainly adds value to your business. And in this case, it adds value, it's going to add value, it's going to give you the ability to add value to a contiguous, a contiguous piece of property that you guys just purchased that really doesn't even have enough space. So you're going to be adding value to two parcels of property. And, and, and all you're basically saying is, well, you know, we're going to just make sure we get the same amount of green space that we already have, and that's, and that's that. In other words, I guess it's basically only saying that you, you can't increase the footprint. So what you're saying is, let us build this, and we will agree not to increase the footprint of our building, you know? Right? Because that's really all it's doing, by saying we're going to set aside this much green space on the lot, that means we're going to have that much less space that we can build additional building on in the future.
Yeah, that, that's true. Although, I, I mean, and I would argue that, I mean, additional green space is not the only benefit that's coming out of this. I mean, there's, there's safety issues down there, there's parking hassles, you've got a busy night down there, people going up and down Ray Ave, looking for a place to park, they're packing in parking lots, they're walking up and down on dark nights, there's, there are other benefits that, that will come out of, out of this, from that standpoint. And, you know.
Well, I mean, I agree. I, I was one of the ones that said, look, I think you guys, they need it over there, and I think we, you know, I think it would be a plus to have that over there for both of your properties now, actually. I mean, maybe all three of the properties, if they own the one next to it too, or the other one next to it. But, you know, my understanding was that there would be some sort of a, you know, some sort of benefit as additional, the creation of additional green space to be able to do that. You know, just like the parking structures are, I mean, if, you know, you're, you're reducing the amount, you know, these guys with the parking structures, when they ask for parking structures, then the purpose is to reduce the amount of impervious surface, right? So here, we're not doing that, because you really, you know, you can't, like you said, you'll be taking away needed spaces. Here, you're just adding, we're doing this literally to add spaces to create value in this property and the contiguous property that was just purchased. So basically, we're saying, look, in return, you know, of the value we're doing by literally change, you know, going to town and trying to change this law to allow you to add value, we're just saying, hey, we, we also would like some value added to the town by, let's add some green space somewhere. That was my understanding from the beginning, and I really wasn't, it kind of really wasn't, you know, it wasn't just going to be, okay, I'm going to do this, build any more space.
I understand, I understand. And, and in trying to create the, the bylaws the way that we did, a lot of it was looking forward down the road. I know there was concern about what other places in town was to go, so you're trying to set it up, anyplace else where this is going, it would have to be a redevelopment of a site, because there's no place that has a, a lot this size with a, with a restaurant and a function facility. And then you'd have, this is a tool when you come to site plan approvals for those types of places, and in, at that point, you can put a parking deck up, and that will create more green space because the, the parking lot would have, could be designed so it was smaller. So that would all work for that going forward. This particular parcel that we're talking about here is an existing parcel. Now, this was, this has been developed over the years in such a way that there is existing green space on the site between landscaping and other areas, and it was, you know, constructed that way years ago, and, you know, obviously, it's been a successful business over the years, and they've done a nice job down there. But the space is what the space is. So I understand the, the, I, I agree that the, that the, that the philosophy behind the parking structure of some sort is to minimize the size of a parking lot, and that would, that's going to happen moving forward if this amendment goes through, and you'll have that ability as, if somebody redevelops a hundred and fifty thousand square foot plus site, you'd have that ability.
Right.
But, but when you're dealing with a, with a, with a, the use that's already in existence, and has been that way for, for a long time, we're somewhat limited to the four corners of the lot as it currently exists.
Um, excuse me, Madam Chair, this is Liz. I just wanted to let you know that Sherry has raised her hand, and I believe that she might have a comment or is looking to speak, so I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. I, I think Sherry and probably Montia are also going to want to weigh in on this. I think I'm going to follow our, our protocol through the board first, and then with her questions. One thing, I just wanted quickly weigh in on this a little bit, and I, I have other questions as well, but I think I just want to remind everyone that this site is, the sites that we looked at that are possible sites where this could occur, they're the only, they're the ones that are possible today. That could change. And we have to remember that this, this change is going to apply to, for many, many years going forward. I can easily see how other sites could want to take advantage of this, and if they have a lot of green space on their site, maybe it's all wetlands and they can't even build on it anyway. They could turn around and say, well, I can have a parking structure because I have this green space over here on my site. So I, I'm leery about this, keeping it just to the footprint itself. I'm, I'm concerned about it as well. So I just wanted to add my concern to, to the one that Joe raised. Joe, did you want to add anything else, or should we move on?
No, I'm, I'm opposed.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Chairman, I just want to correct you something that was said, that, we did talk a lot about the, that scenario of if a site's like all wetland and undevelopable, that for that reason, the word upland green space was added to the definition. So just to, to make sure that was clear.
That's good, yeah. Forgot about that, thank you.
That was through ZBRC, yeah.
Okay. Member Espo, did you have any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to weigh in on what we're talking about now with maybe having the applicant who's looking for a parking structure, add some green space, you know, as a benefit to the town. I think that request is kind of counterintuitive, because if an applicant comes to us looking for a parking deck, it's because they have a lack of space, and they don't have any space and need more. So maybe we could get creative and say, maybe the town benefit could be a donation for the Sculpture Park, or for one of those boardwalks in Mary Cummings. We just get creative and adding a better sidewalk or something, get creative instead, you know, and open it up a little bit, because each site, as we all know, it's, has its own, you know, its own challenges, I'll say. So I don't know, I mean, I don't know where else on the Esca Drill site you could add green space, and that's why they're, they're looking for a parking deck in the lot behind That's all I really have.
You know, and Member Cavino, questions or comments?
Sure. On the, on this particular issue that we're talking about right now, I think what we, what is proposed that.
Issues, Arnie, you can talk, but other questions.
Oh, okay. Okay, let me start with this issue then, for, since we're talking about right now. I think the zoning by law change as proposed gives the planning board the ability to, to determine an alternate public benefit is, is what it says as proposed. So to me, that, that sounds like it could mean, as Bill was talking about, maybe developing a, a pocket park somewhere, or, or, or something else. And we have to remember that we're not just talking about this particular applicant, we're changing the zoning by law forever until it's changed, until if it was changed again. So somebody could be either, either proposing to renovate a site as the Esca Drill is, or proposing to start with a new site. So I, I think as, as we have this proposed here, and I believe the square footage that we're talking about is the square footage of the deck itself, the additional parking deck, not, not the on-grade parking that's underneath it also. Am I correct? Is that, Kristen, can you clarify that for me?
Yeah, it is, it must be the footprint, that's what.
It's, it wasn't intended to be the, the square footage of all levels.
Right, just the deck itself. Okay. And so, so I'm in agreement with the way the zoning by law is written right now. You either replicate it on the site, if, and if you can't do that, and you come to the planning board and you say, I can't do that, what, is there some other public benefit that you want me to provide? And then this case, since this is a developer that owns other property in town, that might be easier to work out than in another case, but I, I think we, we, we have to, as I say, this is a change to the zoning by law period. So I, I think this gives the planning board a lot of latitude in, in what to accept as a, as a public benefit. Okay, so that's, that's all I had on that particular issue, but on, on the, on another, where parking structures allowed in the, in the general business district, do we, do we really want to allow parking structures or just parking decks? I don't know if I raised this point before, but do we want somebody to be able to put up more than a parking deck in a BG zone? I don't, I would say we just want them to put up a, just be allowed to add another level of parking or a parking deck. And so I, I don't remember exactly how that reads right now, but.
Right now, it's just to allow the parking deck definition, which is the single level as an accessory use in BG.
I thought it said parking structure in the wording, not in the use table.
Can you, Liz, can you go to the use table?
Yeah.
So the parking deck, it's just by special permit as an accessory use?
Okay, then.
We're not allowing structured or integrated within the BG district.
Then the language in, the language in section seven might be a little misleading, where it says parking structures allowed in the BG zone? Shouldn't it say parking? Oh, okay. So this is a parking structure. Okay.
Well, okay, so and then Article Seven. So the, the lead category is parking, is parking structures in the definition, so it's, parking structures include all of those things. So if you build, if anytime in the future a parking structure was allowed, it would still have to be only for these types of uses.
And they would only, and as it stands, the revision we're putting forward right now would just be for parking decks in a BG zone, is that correct?
Yes, because that's the only thing that you're allowing in the use table. If you allow the other ones, the other ones would also be subject to this provision.
Just the language was a little confusing, but I, I understand the over, the, the heading is parking structure, and the sub is parking deck. Okay, and I had, I had just one other thing, and then that is the definition of function? Function halls or whatever? At the very tail end of that, Liz, is that available by any chance? The definition, okay, establish with? We seem to limit it or at the, the last three words, or other social events. Should it, should it be business or social events, or is a business event held in a function hall considered a social event? In other words, okay, so the Esca Drill had rents out their function hall to ABC Corporation for a business meeting. Is that, does that mean that now they don't have a function facility?
Wouldn't that be a conference?
Uh, okay.
Or a private party?
Okay, conference, working group, private party, or other social events, maybe, I'm probably being a little too picky, and I didn't know if anybody else, or anybody else. That's all. I think I'm all set, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Arnie? Okay, this is Barbara again. Member Raymond, did you have any questions you wanted to ask?
No, I just thought, I'm harking back to the land swap when we did so many creative things there, and I thought it would be interesting if we went to Conservation End or some of the other boards in town to find, to ask Conservation if they had, you know, a possible place for green space, a small park or whatever, that we could offer as an alternative. You know, initially, we talked about doing something on Ray Avenue, but like everywhere else, there's no space to do it. But I wondered if Conservation had any potential areas where we could get a nice green space, possibly in the residential area or whatever. But that's, you know, those are just my thoughts for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. This is Barbara again. Member, would you like to weigh in?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. I think I weighed in on the green space with Member in Pemba. I think Member Cavino makes a good point with the single parking deck limit, I'm sure that's in there. I mean, my travels around the country and internationally is that the, the single deck would be appropriate there, you don't necessarily have the, the multi, multi stack. A couple of things I was thinking of as, as, as to narrow down this, is, is it possible to get design control of these? I recall when I first came to the board, the board was looking at the district and the parking garage there, and, and the board at the time didn't have design control over that. There were a lot of opportunities. board at the time didn't have design control over that. There were a lot of opportunities to make that look nice. Um, so I wonder if that's an opportunity here. And the other thing I was thinking about was if you go to the, uh, you know, you, with the additional parking there, and you've got that tough intersection at Ray Ave and Cambridge Street at certain times of day, or maybe after hockey games, um, you know, thinking forward a little bit on this particular site, uh, is an opportunity to put a traffic light there, um, going forwards, just, just in general, like something. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, thank you, Bill. Good points. Um, Member Rapidport, do you have any questions or comments?
Should probably get off mute, huh? Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, to, uh, kind of mirror what, um, Member Cavino had said, I also agree. I think we probably should just add the word business events because, uh, you know, in the definition, 2.6.9 for function facility, we're saying other social events, but we're not really calling out business events. Um, so I really, I would like to see business event, business or social events, or some type of verbiage along those lines. Um, other, other than that, um, you know, I, I, I agree, you know, I think that there should be some type of benefit if we're changing our laws, um, with this specific applicant. You know, they do have other, um, you know, other property in, in town. But, um, you know, there could be another benefit. So I think we can definitely get creative. Uh, and, and again, mirroring what, uh, Member Gaffney said, um, I also would like to see some type of design or potential design. Um, and if we could have some type of input, uh, in what's being built there, I would appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Okay, Barbara here. Um, my fellow board members have made excellent points, like a lot of them. So, um, I agree with Bill. I'd like to add something so that we get some design review over the parking deck so that we can make sure that they're as attractive as possible. Um, I share Joe's concern, um, about future sites, but also specifically about this site because it's, to me, the way things are phrased, that this parking deck could be built and the town would got, maybe not get any additional green space because the site already has a significant amount of green space. So I, I'd like some clarification on that to make sure I'm not misunderstanding that. Um, I also had some, a question about the definition of function because I started thinking, um, a lot about this whole proposal worries me. I'm always thinking about the unintended consequences and I think this particular project is rife with that. Um, so I was trying to think about different things that could qualify under that definition. And for example, Chuck E. Cheese has a function area where they have little kid parties and a restaurant. That would qualify under this definition. Um, there's a place in, in Woburn called Jump On In where they have little kid parties all the time. Um, they don't have a restaurant attached, but if they did, that would qualify. So I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with this definition because I think there is, um, a very strong possibility that there would be other sites in town that could easily create a function attached, not function facility attached to a restaurant that we aren't really thinking. We're thinking of weddings and anniversary parties and things like that as functions, but other people have different ideas of what a function is and those little kid parties probably count as functions. So I'm a little worried about that because that would be very easy to add to a lot of things. They could easily add something like that at the mall. I could see, they could do that tomorrow. It would be so, um. The other question was, um, back on the definition of the enclosed parking, when we're talking about enclosed parking deck, it said the, into, where is that? If we can bring that up, that would be really helpful. Um, parking. Yes. Above, it could be partially or totally above grade with love, with those levels being open and closed or integrated into the grade, grade of the site. Do we really want them to not be open? Because this sounds like it could be, I worry about, could they actually have a parking deck where the bottom deck is completely enclosed and below grade as in scary underground parking? That's what I'm, that's what I'm picturing. If it was into, it was below grade and enclosed, I don't think that's what we were talking about. Maybe I'm the only one who feels concerned about that. I'd like to know what the rest of the board members think about that. And maybe we, that language, maybe I'm the only one who has the concern. I don't know. Um, and then some clarification from the applicant as to this particular site and whether or not the town would be getting green space in, in return for allowing this. Before we get to that, I just want to express again, which I, I have expressed every time we've discussed this, so I know I sound like a broken record, I'm very worried about this and the unintended consequences. We, the list of sites, concerns about those sites that, but there will be sites in the future that, that qualify for that to happen or where that'll happen. I'm deeply concerned. And I know I've expressed this before and are, I, I'm told that the lawyers are saying we can't do it just for your site. If we could do this just for your site, I would be fine with it. I'm uncomfortable with this bigger change that could have a domino effect. There's any- But I would-
You're breaking up, Barbara, for some reason.
Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay.
Yes.
So I would like the applicant to just, um, jump in here if possible and explain, am I mistaken in understanding that the way this is phrased, you could add that deck and not add any additional green space because you already have ample green on the, on the site? Am I correct in that understanding?
Uh, yeah, this is Tom, Barbara. Uh, you are, you are correct as it currently exists. We do have sufficient upland green space, um, already on site that would, um, exceeds the size of the, um, proposed parking deck.
Thank you. That's what I thought. So I would, I would say that I think we need to rephrase this so that we are getting additional green space to compensate-
This is Mike Murray, if, if I could, if I could comment on that. Um, the green space that we have there is green space that we've decided to have there to make our site more attractive. We are not required to have it there. So-
And it's beautiful.
So, so to say that that shouldn't get us anything at all, you know, if another site were to be able to meet all the other requirements of this and it was a new site, all of the green space would count towards this requirement. So I don't under, so I, I understand where you're coming from with this and, and maybe there's an adjustment to the number that we could, we could work with, but to, to get no credit for the greens, the landscaping, the green space that we have.
No, I understand what you're saying. And you brought this in our, in our, um, subcommittee meeting as well. And I'm sympathetic to the argument. However, you're, this is a separate piece of property that you're now joining into the other piece of property. So this piece of property has no green space at all. And now you're going to sort of gain the benefit of the green space that you have on your first piece of property and add, I, we're going through a lot of trouble with, what you're asking us to do, and I understand the need for it and I agree with the need for it, but we're making a ma, you're asking us to make a major change here that has far reaching implications. Really, like Joe said, what is the town getting in return for this enormous risk that we're taking?
Uh, if, and this is Tom again, Barbara, just, um, backtracking a little bit to your concerns about the unintended consequences. And you made the example of a couple of smaller outfits, uh, restaurants that might have a birthday party or something. That's why we put the 400 person capacity into the bylaw because we had discussion about that very situation and none of us wanted that, honestly. So, um, Chuck E. Cheese, if that was still in existence, just because they have a, a birthday party with, with 10 six-year-olds, that doesn't give them the right to, to build a, a parking deck. Um, so I, 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 when we started this, the whole unintended consequences was a concern on all sides. And I think over the last three or four or five months, all along, we've been talking about it, with all of the restrictions we've put in and this, you know, spelled out in Article seven, um, I think we've done a pretty good job of, of reducing and minimizing the potential unintended consequences. Because realistically, um, to get 150,000 square foot lot in a BG district, um, 200 feet or more from resident, you know, all the things in there, it, there's, there's just not a lot of possibilities where that could happen. And, and frankly, they couldn't even happen in, for the most part unless somebody totally tears down an existing use like, um, what, one of the larger parking, uh, shopping plaza type of thing. So there were very few areas that, that would fall under this. So the unintended consequences, I would submit, uh, uh, minimized to a, a pretty significant degree. And, um, and, and so I, I, I understand that we're asking the zoning bylaws to be changed and I'm not suggesting that that's not an insignificant thing to do because that doesn't happen, um, often. And that's why it's a two, two-thirds vote of town meeting. It's not something that we should be doing willy-nilly. Um, but I would respectfully disagree that, that the town is putting themselves at risk to a great extent by allowing this to happen. I, I just don't think that's the case. Now, you can certainly make the argument that, you know, you're getting something, we should be getting something too. And as I said earlier, I frankly think that you are. It's, it's going to alleviate to a, to a certain degree anyway, that the traffic situation over at Ray Ave, which if you've been down there in a, at a wedding some night, on a Saturday night with everybody going to dinner and a hockey game down the street, it can get kind of crazy down there. Um, so that's, that's a, that's a benefit to the town. Um, the, the applicant here is going to, um, expend a significant amount of money to do this. And so he's, he's certainly going to be improving the traffic flow and the parking situation down there. I'm not arguing that he's not getting a benefit to his business because otherwise he wouldn't be doing it. I'm not suggesting that, but I would suggest that the town is getting a benefit and, and the, the public safety is getting a benefit out of it. Um, but I think Michael, Michael made a, uh, uh, makes this a, a valid point. They've done a nice job over the years of, of maintaining that facility and keeping the green space to the degree that they have. They could have come in 20, 40 years ago and just taken down every tree and just put a whole bunch of paving down there, then we wouldn't have to be worrying about it and we all would have been looking at pavement for the last 40 years. So they should get some credit for, for having done that. They, you know, that's, it's, um, and so I, I, I guess my main point was I just wanted to opine that I don't think the, the, the risk of unintended consequences to the town is as significant as maybe some people are concerned, uh, that it might be.
Um, I, and I do have, um, as you can't minimize unintended consequences, but by the definition, that, that's what unintended con, no.
I hear.
Minimize possibly can.
Yep.
Either the cafe escad, this law, um, maintained for many, many to this business to function when it was really not able to think problem. But it, and it, we value, want to, um,
Barbara, you're breaking up quite a bit.
Yeah, I can't, I can't even hear.
If you, uh, if you turn off your, Barbara, if you turn off your, um, video, uh, it might, uh, allow you to speed up a little bit.
How do I do that?
That work? Yeah, it just keeps talking. It's, it does sometimes that you're using a lot of bandwidth or someone in your house is watching Netflix.
I'm just, um, stand that there's some benefit to town in reducing, I don't know, to successful business, but I'm sure that has significant effect to the town. It's enough to find the risk. We don't know how much of it is that we're taking in doing this. My, and I would like to hear from other people to speak. Her hand raised at one point. I'm pretty sure one, yeah, would like to.
Barbara, this is Mike. He's still fading in and out.
Oh. Turned off video, but-
Yeah, Barbara, I, I don't, I hate, I hate to say it, but I, I, I mean, you might need to, um, just log in, log off and log right back in quickly to-
I'll do that. I'm doing that. Thanks.
Okay. So we'll hear from, we'll hear from Sherry and you jump off and jump right back in.
Hi, it's Sherry. Um, I think my comment that I was going to say before was answered by Ernie, um, that we talked about at CBRC, um, is that, you know, the, um, comment about green space from Joe, and I think Mike too, is that the, uh, section there in, uh, in the green space requirement kind of gives the planning board that, um, alternative to find a different green space or a different public benefit. So that was my only comment that I wanted to say back then. So that was it.
So is Barbara still off? Um, is there anyone else who wanted to make a comment? Or I know, um, Monty is on and I think you guys had gone to land use. Do you want to give us an update?
Yes. Uh, the land use, um, agreed with, um, most of the proposal and we wanted to support the restaurant. I do believe that, um, a good point was raised about, um, the green space requirement that, um, particular property, it doesn't make sense to require them to take away parking spaces somewhere else by counting both the deck and the ground floor of the parking structure. I mean, that doubles the amount of green space that you would be requiring. But I do think that in general, if we're making a permanent change to the bylaws, uh, that we would want to have a requirement that the green space requirement is both the ground floor added to the deck total. Um, and that in those situations where you have something like the escadrill where there really isn't a lot of options for that green space, um, it does say that, um, there would be, um, the ability of the planning board to have something else be done in that because of the inability to, you know, just create green space out of thin space. For example, the planning board in this situation because the applicant doesn't have, um, enough green space to, uh, include both, to match both the flooring, uh, the ground floor and the new deck, you could say that in lieu of that, that, um, it would, the, um, applicant could put, uh, uh, some kind of traffic light in at Roy Avenue, um, or Ray Avenue, I guess it is, um, as, as a safety measure. And it may be that you want, require them to put in a light that, um, is primarily a blinking yellow light and that can be, um, operated by a traffic officer on Saturday evenings or something like that. So that when, when you are talking about adding an extra 30 cars to the, uh, traffic situation there and maybe on Friday evenings and, uh, Saturday evenings, they would install a, um, a yellow flashing light that a police officer could use in those evenings to make it into a red and green light. And that would be a significant safety addition for the town because that road is a little bit of a safety problem. So then, um, So then, um, so, um, so that, so that one comment. That's one comment about the green space. I think it should be both the land, ground space and the deck and that, um, but other things could be done in, uh, in lieu of, uh, doing that green space. Uh, the one other comment I have is that I happened to be at Belsley College, uh, last year and, um, oh, in, as part of that process, went and used their parking garage and had to do sort of a double take because their parking garage was designed in a way so that the structure melded into the, um, the look of the hillside against it, which, which, so I would strong, um, the park, the, uh, planning board that while we're talking about parking structures and stuff, that some degree of control over, uh, the design of these structures would be a great idea because, you know, you are allowing these parking garages in town. There's certainly no reason why people couldn't make them something other than a gray hulking structure. And that would certainly, uh, make people feel more comfortable about having them in town. So those are my two comments about, um, the discussion here.
Thank you, Monty. Uh, this is Barbara again. Did I miss Sherry or did Sherry not weigh in? Did we lose Sherry?
Sh- Sherry spoke and you sound much better.
Ah, okay.
I weighed in already, I'm good.
Okay, I, I can watch it back, thank you. Is there anyone else who is listening or watching that wants to, to weigh in? Brady, Jen and Liz, anyone?
I do not have anyone in the chat or on Facebook currently, Barbara.
Okay.
Actually, um, can I ask another question?
Of course, please go ahead, Monty.
Uh, the, I, I forgot to ask, are we discussing here the definitions of green space that's there, the parking structure definition and the green space definition?
Yes, we received your email, but now would be the, uh, an appropriate time for you to discuss that.
Okay, I, I should have done that too, I'm sorry.
Let's wait up, go ahead.
Okay, I would like to, if you look at the top of that page, the first thing there is a definition of green space. And I would like to object to that definition. I think it is vague to the point of being, uh, capable of being used for almost any meaning. Um, and what I mean by that is that, for example, in this example, according, using the definition that is, um, is placed here, when you say, oh, well, we need to do more green space to, uh, make up for the parking garage area, someone could put in a lawn with, uh, decorative plants and say that that was their green space. Um, and I think that is not, um, the way in which the term green space ought to be used. I think that the definition there that's there, uh, can, there's two types of different uses of the term. Green space for recreational use defines space now common, but green space for aesthetic purposes is in practice landscaping. And, uh, there is another way in which the term green space is used and the way in which probably the average person thinks of it. And that is habitat for plants and birds, um, or other activity, or a place where humans can do passive recreation. And that's what they think of for green space. So my concern is that the definition that you have here will allow, um, will kind of cloak the meaning, potentially asking, uh, advocates, uh, proponents of, uh, land use changes to, um, put in landscaping. And asking people to put in landscaping is not, um, equivalent to having them put in habitat for plants and animals and for people to use for passive recreation. And so I think that would be more accurate, um, if the planning board, uh, made a distinction between requiring landscaping and requiring green space. And I would like to offer instead greater clarity by having green space be defined as a mixed area of plants and trees suitable as habitat for birds and animals and/or for passive recreational usage. And then have another definition here that we add called landscaping. And that would be the use of plants, trees and lawn for aesthetic purposes. And if you did, if you split it up the definitions that way, what would happen is that the public and developers and planners in the planning board would know exactly what it is at stake during negotiations in the planning process. Otherwise, the term green space gets tossed around and what actually ends up being created, um, can be very different. So I really would like to see that green space definition changed. And, um, uh, the, uh, land use committee did not approve this warrant article about definitions because I asked them, I told them that I had, um, problems with the green space. And so that was not approved by the land use committee.
Thank you, Monty. Um, um, I appreciate that. I, I also appreciate the use of the information ahead of time so that the other members could, could get over. And I would like to hear from the members what, um, everyone is thinking about Monty's proposal in terms of those two definitions instead of just one. Um, perhaps we could just go in the same order, uh, Joe and Pemba?
What was that, Barbara? I didn't hear you.
I just wanted to know if you wanted to make a comment about Monty's proposal that we include two definitions instead of just one.
No, I mean, I really haven't, uh, I mean, I, I understand where he's coming from and I haven't really thought it through yet. Um, it'd be, I mean, it's, you know, when you, the amount of space you're talking about, the green space piece of it, it'd be hard to, I mean, I, I guess unless you literally did what one of my, you know, uh, examples was is if you literally bought, you know, conservation land somewhere and just left it set aside. I mean, that would be one way to do it. But, um, aside from that, it'd be tough to create a, you know, a green space with that definition, you know, on a site like that, I guess, you know, in, in a small piece, right? I mean, it would be, it'd be a.
True, but I think the definitions, the definitions though don't necessarily have to apply even. We could just decide that in, in this case, we're talking about green space, or rather landscaped space versus.
Absolutely, to allow, uh, to allow for two different possibilities. I, I would be perfectly happy with having that in there. I don't, you know, I don't oppose it. It's just, it'd just be a question of, it'd be difficult in most cases, you know, to have a space that big that you're now going to create a, an outdoor, um, habitat. You know what I mean? I guess you couldn't do it, but you almost would have to in a case, in a case like that, you would almost have to just purchase an existing habitat. That's like, I guess what I'm saying. You almost couldn't create it. You'd have to, you'd have to preserve it somewhere, you know, purchase and preserve.
Joe, a question?
Of course.
What's that?
Joe, uh, when you were talking about the amount of green space that, um, should be created because a, a developer was putting in a parking garage, when you said the word green space, were you thinking to yourself, we want them to put more landscaping in?
Well, when I say green space, I, I, I see both, I see them both as green space, quite honestly. But your, that definition that you've spoken about, which is more of a, an out, you know, habitat or a natural space, you know, a wildlife space or natural space or a landscape, you know, grass, landscape area as well. I think in some cases it would be appropriate, what you're saying. You know, I mean, I, there are places where you could, you know, where they'd be happy to, you know, there may be land that's, that's, you know, that, that basically incorporate, has wetlands in it or some, some value to the Conservation Commission, but it's not really even buildable. If they were to, you know, go, if somebody were to go out and purchase that and turn it over to the town, that's just as good. So I mean, that would fall under the other definition.
Yeah, I, I'm, what I'm saying, Joe, is that I think it might be of more value to the town for the planning board to be requiring a developer to provide some kind of, um, compensation to the town by helping with that kind of green space creation than it is by merely asking them to do some landscaping of their property.
Well, I, I, again, you know, when my thoughts on it were what I had said originally when they came before us months ago.
Mm-hmm.
In a case like that, I think it's a great option for the, for there be a possibility of creating, you know, on, on other sites in town that may be more strategic for the town.
Yes.
You know, um, you know, which would be in the downtown area. I mean, if they, if they were willing to create or replicate some green space instead of pavement in the downtown area, that would be something that the whole town could enjoy, you know, on a daily basis. When we walked or rode, you know, rode bikes or wa- walked through the downtown or use the shops in the downtown. I think those are things that create an atmosphere in the downtown that we could see every day when we drove through there or walked through there or rode our bikes through there. So I think they both have their own value, but I think the two definitions are, it's fine to have the two definitions because I could also, you know, see a scenario by where someone didn't have the ability to do a replication in the downtown. But, you know, but there may be a piece of, you know, wildlife that's a vacant lot that has some wetlands and, you know, has some, has some, uh, you know, uh, wetlands value to it and conservation value to it. And I know the Conservation Commission is, you know, would be, you know, extremely happy to be able to have that type of a benefit as well. Um, so I think to incorporate both of them, that is fine. And then, you know, it could, it, it leaves the auctions open, right? I mean, it, it doesn't pigeonhole anyone into having to do it any particular place or any particular way. But I, I see both of those definitions of green space benefiting the town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, and thank you, Monty. Do, do any other members want to particularly on this discussion?
Madam Chair, this is Mike. Um, I, I like, um, Monty's addition to the, uh, the definition. I think anytime clarity is good and anytime you can, uh, be more clear in requests or what we're talking about, uh, can only help things. So I'd be in favor of adding and expanding the definition per Monty's suggestion. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I believe that, um, uh, Member Gaffney has raised his hand and has a comment.
Please jump in, Bill.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'd like to, uh, thank Mr. Pearson on that definition. I agree with, uh, Members Baio, uh, that I think they have both of those definitions, whether they're included in there or not, is, is a great idea. Uh, just a question for Mr. Pearson, if he's still there.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Did you get that from Benchmarking Other Towns or, you know, how'd you come?
Exact language?
Yeah.
No, I didn't get it from Benchmarking Other Towns. I'm trying to reach the Conservation Commission to see if they have specific language from, from, um, the Conservation, uh, Commission world, but I, not specific language.
Okay, great, thank you. And just, uh, the, uh, just one other thing, Madam Chair, I did, as, as you started talking, I, I did want to add that when you talk about the unintended consequences, you know, a, a lot of us have been here for a lot of years. And if you think back to where, when I came here and the mall was a sandpit, and you'd never think that there'd be a mall there or, you know, the industrial park up there would turn into Third Ave or, you know, the district would change in the way it did. Um, you'd never think that, right? Uh, so, you know, when you put these things into place, everyone's thinking, um, you know, with what they have their visions is, and then what you really need to do is to say potentially what could happen. And I, I think Madam Chair, you're right on with that, where you say, could the mall put a restaurant with a function hall? They're very, they could do it today, they could do that very easily today. But things could change, uh, you know, at Crossroads Plaza or they could change over. Uh, you know, where Seasons Fifty-Two could join with LL Bean and then they turn the corner there and they can make that one big restaurant slash function hall. And then, you know, the deck comes up and it's a beautiful place to put the deck, you know, in the back there with the elevation. So, um, I think we really got to, really got to think about this one with, got to the one, one spot there versus, you know, the unintended consequences, thinking, thinking the long game, which I think you've heard me say quite a bit over the years. Instead of just thinking, thinking today as, as planners, you know, that, that planner word for me is, 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 it's kind of precious because that's what we're supposed to do is plan instead of just, you know, like the short-term gain there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Um, Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Yes, Ernie, please go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, as far as Monty's definition is concerned, this, this is, this is a definition so it would apply, it would apply throughout the zoning bylaw, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. And I, I think it's, I think it's good to, uh, even more define, or define it. And if it's still, if the word green space still remains in the, in the, uh, in the article on the, on the, uh, parking in the BG zone, then either of these would apply, green space or landscape, I believe, right? Because this would be under the, yeah, this would be under the heading of, maybe not. Okay, so we might have to change that to green space or landscaping.
We would have to decide that. I think what Mr. Pearson was suggesting is that he was suggesting it be green space. We would have to discuss that because, you know, if we wanted to try and get, for example, a little park area down in the downtown area, that wouldn't necessarily be considered green space under that definition. It would be more like landscaped space. So I think you're right, definition, I think we're all agreeing that the definitions are good and we should have those two definitions. How we apply them to this particular bylaw, I think we still have to figure out.
Right, and, uh, so I, I would agree with Monty on that, but I would disagree with him on his other point about the, uh, the amount of green space because, yeah, he said he wanted to count the onsite parking, uh, on grade, excuse me, on grade parking as well as the parking on the deck itself to be green space. I would argue that the on-grade parking would be allowed under the current zoning bylaw. So I, I'm not sure, I think that might be a little unfair, let me put it that way. That's only my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ernie. Does anyone else want to weigh in or are there any other people that want to comment on this? We, we're not making a decision on this tonight, we're going to continue. But if they, if they want to throw out there, raise your hand or call her.
But, but, oh, Barbara, I have one comment if I could, this is Tom.
Yes, Tom, please go ahead.
Um, just, this is going to, uh, Monty's suggestion, so it's kind of off topic as far as, uh, proposal. But, um, there are, there are areas in the bylaws, uh, for instance, that, um, require a certain percentage of pervious versus impervious surface and things like that. And I think traditionally, green space has just been considered impervious surface, whether it's natural habitat, whether it's landscaping, whatever, it's, it's either pervious or impervious. And I just caution the board, um, that if they choose to, to, to break that definition into two, landscaping and, and natural habitat or whatever you're going to call it, um, you might have to go, go back and, and, and tweak some other areas in the current bylaws which require just a certain percentage of impervious surface. And over the, over the course of time, that's been called green space. And now suddenly we're supposed to have sixty percent, um, green space, but a good chunk of that is landscaping. And now all of a sudden, you got to make it natural habitat. It, it, you're either going to create a whole bunch of non-conforming uses or you're going to create a lot of confusion. So a, a lot, following in the path of unintended consequences, if you're going to tweak that, if you're going to tweak that definition, I just think there should be some pretty thorough going through the bylaws to make sure you, you back into it all the way down the line.
That's a very good point, thank you, Tom.
I agree.
Oh, okay. This is Mike Murray. I had a question for, uh, clarification, uh, on one of the points that was brought up about, um, design control for the building. And, I mean.
It was for the, not for the building, but for the.
For the construction, sorry, yes. Um, I guess I just, I'd be curious and maybe flush that out more. We're obviously willing to work with the town on that, but I don't know how that could necessarily be written into the bylaw unless I'm mistaken. I don't know if there needs to be design criteria that would need to be written for that as their town center. I mean, maybe Kristen could weigh in on that.
Um, so.
So in all situations, design, the, we should be looking to narrow. So somebody brought up the, or I think Member Gaffney brought up the five over five building with, in the district with the five levels of parking and five levels of building. So in, in, in the Plan Development District, there is a provision in there that, and I can't remember it verbatim. If I could, that'd be amazing. But, but anyway, it's, it gets to something like the planning board has control over, you know, the materials, the, the, the areas that are viewed from the pedestrian, you know, pedestrians or people using the park. You know, so therefore, how can we write it so it's concise to say what you have control over and what it is that you can talk about? You know, materials facing, not necessarily, as we do in the town center, this it should be colonial or not. It really gets to really narrowing what it is that you, you're allowing for the board to have additional controls. So I, I think we can, what I can do is try to look at the district language. There's also some language in Northwest Park to get at some control that does give the board some authority over design, but not so much so as the town center where we do need to, you would need to write kind of design review guidelines and regulations separate and apart to allow, to guide the board in their decision. So I, I don't have a concise answer right now, but it's something we can think about. But I, I think we just need to really look at what is, what is it that we're looking to control and why? That, you know, from the pedestrian face, you don't want it to have, you know, a blank wall. You want it activated. You kind of have to look at it, health, safety, welfare, Burlington. Why does this design control fit into something that you should be controlling with zoning where you don't have specific design controls like you would in a historic district or a town center district? So you just have to get at it a little bit differently and more precise, precisely in terms of what we're looking at. So it's possible. It's just, it's not there now, but I can send some examples before our next meeting to consider.
Madam Chair, I have a hand raised from Member Gaffney. And also Sherry still has her hand raised, but I don't know if that's from before or what's, what's going on. So just FYI.
All right, Member Gaffney, does you want to weigh in?
Yeah, just, just a quick comment on that. What I would do is, and I'm sure we have examples, but probably limited examples of that in our own bylaw because I think we probably don't have a lot of that. And I go back to when, I think it was Ernie and myself went to Holy Cross. And I don't know if you're using the same class as I with got to design control. Maybe not look internally, but maybe look, benchmark other towns and see what they have for that. It might be stuff out there. Again, where I travel around the country, you can see that this design controls on, on the parking garages and parking decks. There's a lot of parking decks, particularly in the high-tech areas, and they do tend to have them well-designed versus other places where you go. There's just the structures, I think, that people are thinking about that just to get planted there. So there is some thought with that planning community or those planning communities where there is design control and they blend into with the, with the landscaping and they also blend in structurally with what's around there. And maybe there's other, other places that have already bitten off that apple.
I mean, generally in, in zoning, in Massachusetts, you can't have specific design controls over general zoning districts unless you tie it into something else. And that's, that's why I said the town center, historic district, or you get at it through the site plan design. So that's why I said you kind of have to look at it through a couple of different pathways. And I could send some examples that have passed muster, both in our bylaws and other bylaws.
Okay, thank you. Sherry, are you still here?
I'm still here. I wanted, I wanted to take a minute to weigh in on both some comments that Tom said and Monty's proposed, you know, definitions. Thinking about green spaces, impervious versus pervious, which is something that's more defined in the bylaws than actually green space and landscaping. So I think that should be looked at as far as specifying particular landscaping in the two definitions he proposed. What I would, and I'm commenting for myself. Obviously, this hasn't gone before ZBRC, so let me preface that by saying just my thoughts on this is that the definition for landscaping is pretty much the same as it's encompassed within green space. So it's kind of a duplicate in that sense. But I understand Monty's point that he wants a difference between, you know, landscaping around a property versus the more general term of green space. So I think what Tom mentioned was, was a good way to look at this is the impervious versus pervious spacing. And where landscaping is used more often times in the town center and things like that. So this, I think this can be reviewed a little bit more with regard to that. That's, that's my general comment there.
Definitely. I mean, we, we're not voting on this tonight.
Right, right. Yes.
Okay, thank you, Sherry.
And likewise, I'll bring, this will be brought before ZBRC our next meeting, not until next month. But certainly I forward it to the committee and we'll obviously have some thoughts on it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. I think we're probably ready to wrap this up and continue with the discussion through our next meeting.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters to the planning board meeting on May 7, 2020.
Second.
Can I have a motion just quickly for discussion?
Sure.
So I just wanted to remind you guys, just, I don't know if I say it often enough, but so just the process of zoning amendments, the zoning amendments are required by law to be posted and discussed with the planning board. The planning board must make a recommendation to town meeting, for town meeting to then vote on them. If the planning board does not make a recommendation, it doesn't go to town meeting. If the planning board denies the whole project, it still goes to town meeting. If they approve the whole thing, it still goes to town meeting. If it's half and half, it still goes to town meeting. It's just, I just wanted to focus on the job of the planning board is to make a recommendation on what it is going to town meeting. So, and if you think about when we were making a motion and we've done, a lot often we just do it to vote favorably or unfavorably. But what the job of the board is to do, and we have done in others, in some situations, is to vote favorably or unfavorably and then have things to say. But we suggest that you consider blank, blank, blank. With Northwest Park, for the housing proposal, they had the whole piece that in the, in the bylaw, but also the, this whole process to discuss the MOU and other things. And you added that letter in your recommendation. So, so just in thinking about this whole thing, what is it that we want to say in a recommendation as we kind of continue to, to figure out what it is this proposal is going to be? So I just wanted to kind of put everyone's head in the right place as we continue moving forward for this meeting and the next meeting, you know, before any recommendations made.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. I do believe it's been moved and seconded if we could have the roll call.
Yep, Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ampemba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Espio?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mike and Tom, for all the information and for coming tonight. And we will take this up again at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Barbara again, moving on. I think our next item is minutes. We have minutes for three meetings. I want to first say thank you, thank you, thank you to Don and Brady because I'm not sure since I've been on planning board if we've ever been this caught up on meeting minutes before. This is incredibly great. So we have February 20th, March 5th, and April 2nd. I'd love to vote on them all together, but if some people can't vote on some meetings, please, and we'll vote on them individually. Okay, great. So if everybody, nobody said anything, let's vote on all three sets of minutes at once.
So you'll, you'll have to take a motion first then to take them all together.
Okay.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meetings of February 20th, April 2nd, and March 5th altogether in a vote.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ampemba? Just going through roll call for the motions. Member Clerk Espio?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, continue.
Madam Chair, this is Mike. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from February 20th, 2020, March 5th, 2020, and April 2nd, 2020.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ampemba?
Yes.
Member Clerk Espio?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I think we're done for tonight. And what, anyone have other business that they need to discuss?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ernie.
Just, just a question, I guess, maybe to staff. Is there any way that we can get some of the master plan done while we're in this remote working atmosphere or is?
Yes, thank you, Ernie, for reminding us of that. Thank you.
Yes, that is the hope. What, what we are, I am doing right now is, is trying to figure out how we mirror our typical process of permitting and application submissions and distribution during this time, which surprisingly has been harder to figure out in terms of, you know, it, you think about how many people touch a piece of paper and how many people do that within the permitting process of accepting plans and distribution and checks. So, you know, we're really trying to figure that process out to, to work during this time, which has been a little bit of a challenge. But, but to Member Cavino's point, that is the goal and we will be rolling things out as we can.
Thank you.
For you guys for review, for sure.
Based on that point, there must be most of it that's actually ready for you to just send out. Can you just send out the parts that don't need any additional work so that we can get a final look at them? I think we need to get this moving.
Yes.
Thank you. Because I think probably the only ones that you are still tweaking are probably housing. Is that right? Okay, so let's send everything else out for everyone to look at and get the ball rolling.
Okay.
Can we get those out next week?
We can get parts of them. We'll get, we'll start rolling them next week. That's what I can tell you.
Okay, sounds good. Anyone else have anything else they need to bring up? All right. Well, I want to thank staff. This again went very smoothly. I'm, I think I'm very impressed with how well organized this is and how well you're handling all of the people coming in and out. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Well, thank you, guys. You guys are doing a good job as well with this. Can I just ask you guys, if there is anything that comes up that you want to talk about in discussion, can you just email us before our next meeting? If there is something that you do want to talk about, just so.
Sure.
What we're finding is there's preparing for a planning board meeting and then there's preparing for a remote planning board meeting. And it's entirely something that we just really need. It's, we really want to be prepared because it's, you know, little things can go, go wrong and then it's, it's just hard to get back on track. So if there is anything for discussion that you guys want to talk about that we haven't already added or that you see in the agenda, staff report, just make sure you let us know.
Great, sounds good.
All right. Thank you, guys. Oh, wait, hold on. We need to roll call.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn and everyone stay safe and healthy.
Second.
Chairman LaRue?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ampemba? Last one, I promise. Member Espio?
Yes.
Member Cavino?
Yes.
Member Raymond?
Yes.
Member Gaffney?
Yes.
Member Rappaport?
Yes.
Hooray. We are adjourned.
Thank you. Bye, everyone.
Good night. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you, Bcat.
Yes, thank you, Bcat.